Good evening, everybody. The call was meeting to order at 6:06 PM. It is April 28th, 2022. City Council, Vader, regular meeting. Roll call.
Jason Daly.
Jason does have to work in ice.
Randy Hall.
Here.
And MacIntosh, here. And Love Lady.
She also is on this meeting.
And Mons Parsons.
Here.
And Mayor Shy.
I am also here. Pledge allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's remark. Worden Park Playground, as any place that's in that area has seen. It has come a long way in a couple of weeks. So there is still one more load of bar chips. It's going to be coming in on page 24. Their truck broke down. Their blower truck, and so it's going to take a little while to get us on the schedule for the next track. But in the meantime, there's obviously enough there. The playground just has a good enough working service. There were some missing clamps for the smaller two to five structure that will be coming in late next week. And that will let them finish up the playground equipment install. McMurphy Lim Drop Off and Chipping Event is this Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00 PM. This is a joint activity between City of Vader and Lewis County Solid Waste. Bring your limbs down there and we will chip them up. And we will use them on our trails in the park. Volunteers are welcome to come down and help spread the chips. City Hall and the shop roof work is being delayed for the weather. Obviously, we've had some crazy weather lately with the their rain hail, sun, rain hail, sun thing. And so the company wanted to wait just a little bit longer before they started painting the shop roof. So we're amending the contract so that they can finish up by the end of June. Originally, it was set to be the end of April. Give them a couple more months to get that done. And then a special thank you to those that worked so hard to get the new Worden Park Playground drain rock and drain fabric installed. We had 10, 12 yard loads of gravel show up. And all that need to get put in. When you think it's spread by hand, we did get the tractor to kind of stump it in places. We could get the tractor in all the places around the playground. So special thank you to John Platt, Michael Castillo, Shelly Beaver, Joe Creer, Samantha Love Lady, Rex Dobbins, Joe Crago, Jeremy Bowen, Kelly Shy, Kristen Miller and her family. And also, I neglected to add Lake Red Cliff to this list as well. He did bring his very small tractor down to help move some of the trucks, some of it around. So thank you to those people. We had a tough day in line to meet to get all that rock and fabric installed by last Friday. We did it. So thank you to all those people. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report?
Yeah, I have a question. On this monstrosity they're building over there. Which one is it?
This.
Because I thought it was supposed to be this.
If they did everything, if they did everything, it would be like this. It would be two of those. So the back two of those next to each other. But.
With two of them with fake stuff on top.
Right, yeah. So it would be, it would look similar. It would be this similar design, not like that. That's the stock photo.
Okay.
This is the custom. Yeah, this is the custom Vader, Vader special that the company came up with so that it would meet our store requirement.
Okay. I was just curious if you saw it here.
They haven't been moving on that. There's been no permits applied for yet.
Okay.
Other council reports. Yep, hearing none. Agenda approval. I do not have any changes to the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the city council meeting for 4/28/2022.
The motion by Mr. Hall to approve the agenda has written to a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. MacIntosh. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Make the motions in three minutes of the council meeting on April 14th, 2022.
Motion by Mr. Hall to approve the meeting minutes from April 14th, 2022. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. MacIntosh. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any of you guys want to talk?
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers end of April 2022 of 29,089.94. And April 22 total, 393,264.17.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve vouchers. It's written to a second. Second by Ms. MacIntosh. Any other discussion of vouchers? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Timberland Regional Library Director Cheryl Haywood. Ms. Eric Hayward, are you there?
I am. Can you see me or hear me?
I can see you. I took the projector. I didn't realize you have a full motion video, but everyone can hear you.
Okay, great. So thank you very much for, to Mayor Shay, and Diane for inviting me tonight to speak with you. And I wanted to, for it to be like a back and forth because I understand that you would like to review options about considering to join Timberland Regional Library. So I was wondering how you would like to proceed in this, in this presentation. Do you want me to give an overview of Timberland or do you want to just go straight to the options?
I think most of the folks here are familiar with the Timberland Library system. I wanted to go through some of the options on how the city might join.
Okay, I'm sorry, but you came in a little bit garbled at the beginning of your comment. Can you repeat?
Yeah. I think just explaining how a city might go about joining the system.
Okay.
Be great information for the council.
Okay. So I also, I also shared a variety of documents with the mayor and Diane that I'm not sure if it was in your board packet or not. So there's two ways that you can join. Well, there's three. I mean, the third one would be as a resident, as a resident, you could pay for an annual membership per individual, and that wouldn't be the city's responsibility. That would be the people who live in your city. For the city, there's two options. One is to contract directly between the city and Timberland Regional Library. And we've done that for decades and decades. And I think it's since 2015 or 2016, we no longer have any cities that are contracting with us because they've moved to the second option, which is an annexation, which requires the vote of the people to tax themselves. So an annexation of voting of people would require a resolution by our Board of Trustees, a resolution, a document from the Lewis County Commissioners. And then you would need to pay for the annexation to be on the ballot for your residents to vote. So that, in essence, is the difference. You still would end up paying the same amount of money of taxes whether you were contracting or annexed. We do have a uniform levy rate across the whole five counties that we serve. So we serve Lewis, Thurston, Mason, Grace Harbor, Pacific County. We are one of the largest public library systems in the state. Our annual budget based on property tax, 91% of our budget is property tax and the rest is timber revenue. And so we, this year's budget is $25.9 million. And you know, I was looking at your population. When I researched your population online, it gave me the 2019 number, which is about 700 and something. And the closest city we have to that is the city of Morton. Yeah, so population of Vader in 2019 was 880 people. In 2019, population of Morton was 1,013 people. And in 2020, in this year, the residents of Morton will be giving our revenue from the city of Morton would be $37,587 based on property assessed values in 2022. So that's just to give you a ballpark figure of what it would either cost you contractually or if the residents went to want it to be, if you want to go towards annexation and a vote. And I can tell you that the annual fee, and this is this is figured out every year in December for the, for the following year. The non-resident borrower fee for 2022 is $102 per year. And it's based on a five-county average 2021 home price. So I don't know if you want me to talk more about what you get with your library card because an annexation or contract, either one gives you a library card. So you would have access to 29 libraries and an online, very robust online resources for K-12 curriculum support as well as, you know, magazines and newspapers and all sorts of things online. eBooks, e-audiobooks, e-magazines.
Cheryl, we have a question from City Councilman Randy Hall. Randy, would you make sure you're talking on microphone, please?
Do you know how many people in Vader currently annual members?
I don't know off the top of my head right now who are library card holders in, in Vader. I can find that out.
That would be.
And I could email that to Diane once I find out. I can do that. I could probably do that tomorrow or Monday.
I think that would be useful information.
Okay.
You know, in our budget, so our budget is available at trl.org and the 22 budget is there. And it's broken down by county so that you could see how much assessed value and revenues coming in by county. So Lewis County is in there. Of course, Vader wouldn't be. But you could get an idea of, there's also, we also put in a number of cardholders in Lewis County. Again, not specific to Vader, but just across the whole county. So that, that information is in the budget.
I have a question.
Does it?
So what they're saying is they want a building over here with supplies with books. They want to pay them?
No.
We do, they do not, unless they sell, we do not get a library.
Okay. So what do we need it for?
Well, we have access to the Winoff Library, for instance, or any other, that's the closest library to us.
Well, why can't I just walk over there anywhere? Why do I need this place?
So, well, this, these are the same folks, so are the regional libraries. So the idea is that there's, there's several ways that someone could access the library. One, since Vader is not part of the regional library system, you'd have to go and you'd have to pay the $102 a year to use the Timberland Library. So you just walk in and do that. Two, the city council of Vader could decide to join the system and the city could pay the annual fee for all of its residents, which in this case would be probably somewhere in the $30,000 range. Come out of our budget, you would pay, and then everyone would get a library card and they could go and use the library. The other way, the third way is put it up to vote the people. People can vote, and if they approve it, then it would come out of the property taxes. So $102 a year would be added to your property tax. Then everyone in the city would have it.
Now, what about the ones that don't want it? Are they still going to have to pay more?
Part of the property.
Yeah.
They would encourage, they would encourage library usage and it would.
Most people don't have enough budget to take out of, out of my property taxes to pay for this. Most of them could just pull online and do the same thing for free. So why do I want this? Why do I want this?
Well, it's.
I'm not convinced.
Well, that's why we're talking about the difference.
I'm not convinced. I don't want none of it.
Well, if you have children, it might be a benefit.
Okay.
Can I, can I, can I say something about the return on investment?
Yeah, go ahead, Cheryl, please.
So, um, when you think about what you pay for, what you can afford to buy books per year, magazine subscriptions, newspaper subscriptions, streaming video, downloadable material, online support help from ages two through, you know, adult. You know, we have a law and, and you know, you have access up to 800,000 books, so to speak. So you're thinking about all the things that you buy as a, as a, as an individual per year or as a family of four per year, including internet access and computers and printers and paper for the printer and all that. I came, I was doing a presentation like about, mm, about four years ago in Lacey and I asked the, the audience how much they pay per year. And I shared with them that the national average at that point for a family of four was about, about 4,000 a year. Like if you went out to the movies and all that kind of stuff, everything for entertainment. And I said then, then I said, you know, look at what you're paying for Timberland and you're getting a lot more than what you would be paying for on your own because you're getting access to 800,000 physical items and then over 80 plus databases on a website that, you know, you need a library card to get into. And then you get 100 free pages per week to print out at a local library, whatever you need. So if you're a small business owner and you need paperwork or you're applying for a job and you need to have it printed out, you can go to one of our libraries to do that. So those are just some of the core resources that we own. I, I can tell you that the level of public library service we provide, there's no way that any one county or even two counties together or three counties together could offer this level of service. You're getting a very, very robust collection, both physical and online. And it's also about, you know, current literacy, future literacy, your children, future children, workforce development. We're heavily involved in STEM, the STEM Alliance across the five county region, the 29 libraries, our connection sites in the workforce system. I personally serve on the Workforce Development Council called Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council. So there's a lot of, you know, alignment across very large organizations, both community-based organizations, government and business organizations across the five counties who are working really hard right now to get our, our residents, you know, trained up to get family wage jobs in this region. So that's just, to me, that's icing on the cake in terms of what Timberland Regional Library does. Because our, our core mission is, is literacy.
So it does, and it would encourage, it would encourage use, folks that might not want to walk over there and spend $100 today, you know, they would just have it be part of their property taxes, you know, $100 a year, maybe $8 a month. Most people wouldn't even realize it, and then they would have access to it.
I don't like it.
And there's all the online resources as well. You don't even need to physically go to the library. Just be at home and access it.
And I can do that on my computer without this. I've been doing it without it. A lot of people have been doing it without it. I don't see the benefit and it's, I've spent money.
Well, as a tough presentation, we asked Ms. Hayward to give the council a presentation so we could offer it to all of you to see, just see what you thought of it and the different ways we could go about encouraging usage and giving that resource to people. All right.
Well, with 880 people in town at $100, that is only 8,000. I don't know what was the 37,000 to join for.
Yeah, that, sorry, that, 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 the exact amount, you know, when I shared with, with you the $102, that's based on, let me just read this resolution again for a moment. Where am I here? It's based on a, that, that 102 is based on a five-county average 2021 home price. That I don't think translates to the 8,000. I think, I don't, I don't, that part of it in terms of how much it would actually cost you, you would need to work it out. I would need to help or work it out with you with the exact amount because I'm not, it's not, I'm not 100% sure that that $102 is the exact amount in terms of what you would need to do because it would be based on your assessed property values in your city. Whereas 102 is the five-county region, 7,000 square miles average.
So is that what someone paid in cash if they go and say, hey, I want a library card?
Right. That's, Cheryl, that's what, that 102 is what someone, if they walked in, that someone walked in right now and said, I'd like a library card. That $102 is what they would be charged.
Correct. Yes.
So why are we joining it then if I'm just walking in and eating?
We're not joining it. We're talking about the options.
I don't want to join it.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Hayward. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Uh, no, I will, but I will get you the number of cardholders for Vader.
That, that would be great. Yeah. And then we'll put together some more information for the other council members. Hope Mr. Hall has another question.
And it also gives you online access to all your library files?
Yes, a library card would. Yes. Because we pay, you know, we pay, we, we put in over a half a million dollars a year into all of our online databases. And overall, we set aside $4 million of our budget towards content of, you know, predominantly physical items, but of course, you've just heard me say half a million for online.
So what kind of online options would you have, do you offer for people?
We have something called Overdrive. That's our major platform. Overdrive provides eBooks, e-audiobooks and e-magazines. So you would have access to 3,000 e-magazines. E-audio, eBooks are always being purchased, so there's always new, new titles. You would have access to Canopy. That starts with a K. Canopy is a streaming video service. And all the videos that are, or the films that are on there, both documentary and feature films are with public performance rights, which means that you could show them in your parks and in your classrooms and in your community centers for free without having to pay for the licensing. You, we also have a lot of curriculum for K through 12. That is, and I don't know if you want me to go through everything. We also have training called LinkedIn Learning, which is an online platform for learning all sorts of soft skills and hard skills in the workplace. We have a similar one called Universal Class, which is another online digital learning platform. Again, this would be for staff and the public. In terms of, let's see. We also have magazines and newspapers online. We also have something called Press Reader where you have access to 7,000 of the world's top newspapers and magazines. All the regional and local newspapers are online. That's the Centralia Chronicle and all the other ones, Aberdeen Daily World, et cetera, et cetera. We have a lot of science. We have a lot of pre, like early, early literacy type databases. I'm just trying to think. It's like whatever you're looking for, you know? If you want to do genealogy, we have genealogy online resources. Let's see. Just trying to think of everything.
I think the subscription to the Chronicle is probably more than $102 a year right now. So that's a pretty good deal right there.
You can go to trl.org. That's the website. And you can, you know, click on Borrow and there's a drop-down menu so that you could see the catalog. You could see Overdrive. You could see Canopy streaming movies, Canopy Kids streaming movies. And under Learn, all the reference databases are there. So there's a lot of, you know, there's A to Z maps online, A to Z, the USA. There's something called ABC Mouse, which we just opened up now for the, like from your home or anywhere in the world. So ABC Mouse is, is designed to help young children ages two through eight, focusing on STEM-related activities like reading and math and science and art and music. You have Ancestry Library Edition. You have Animal Life Encyclopedia. You have Britannica Library, Biographical Dictionary, Popular Musicians. You have a lot around workforce development and careers. You have coding. You have access to something called Creative Bug, which is like arts and craft stuff that you can learn online. Culture grams, people and lands and customs and lifestyles from all over the world. It just goes on and on and on. So you can check it out yourself.
That's great. All right. Well, I think, I think that's enough for, for tonight. We're going to put something together for the council that they can look at and think about it some more.
Okay. And I, I sent Diane and the mayor the 2021 annual report, which is on our website, as well as a STEM resources PowerPoint that I recently presented at the Capital STEM Alliance. And so you have access to that information. And I'm always one, one email, one phone call away if you have questions.
All right, great. Yeah. And if we haven't already, we're going to be sharing the other documents that you sent to us with the council members as well.
Great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Moving on to item one on the city business. Council consider increasing the town of many names book donation from $20 each to $25 each. It was a best report.
Do we not have, no, he's.
The last one, the last week of the month.
Band gun.
No. So I don't want to, council, council would consider increasing the kind of many names book donation from $20 each to $25 each. The latest books that we did get printed in, to get ready for May Day, they came in at, what were they? They were
13.
$13 apiece is what our actual costs are to print one of these books. And so the park board, as you know, donate, the price of the people purchase the book, but it's actually a donation and it goes to the park board and it helps the parks out. The park board is asking that we raise the price to $25 since our cost of print has now gone up as well. So they could actually make a little bit, little bit more money on it.
I make a motion that we increase the price of the books to $25.
You have a motion by Mr. Parsons to increase the donation price from 20 to 25. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Hall for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, council would discuss updating the asset inventory control policy created in 2004. So in a nutshell, $5. Anything that the city owns that is $5 in value or more has an asset tag on it and we track it. So chairs, hammers, anything that's $5 or more. So chairs, hammers, anything that's five dollars or more. Um, that is. That, that is a, uh, heavy burden on the city staff to track all of these things. Um, that is not a state mandated law that we have, it's a city policy, the five dollars. We're requesting that we change the policy to a hundred dollars. So only things of value that are a hundred dollars or more are tracked in the inventory control system. It's a much more, um, realistic. Number to keep, to keep track of. Um, of course, only things of substantial value will then be tracked. Diane, would you like to talk about why it's, the way it's, how much value it is?
Well, the way it's written is that, um. Things that are under five dollars can be tracked also. But basically, they're saying that you wanna track everything, but if it's less than a hundred dollars, if it's a key piece of equipment, you still want to track. For example, all our microphones here, uh, chairs and stuff like that that we use on a regular basis, but not like. Every hammer and nail and everything that's in the garage, which we've had to track in the past, all the rakes, all the, everything that's in there.
Yearly, you're supposed to go and find all this stuff.
Yes, yes. Every beaker that's in the lab. All those things, you know, so this is much more reasonable and manageable. Um, but that's what we're asking. And we're not doing it tonight. We're just asking for your advice. We can write policy again with the changes and then you.
We're, we're requesting a hundred dollars as, as, as the new limit, but, um, it's up to council.
I like the idea. I think we should go forward with it.
Why not twenty five or fifty? Cause I pay for this stuff. I wanna know where it's at.
It, it's up to council. You know, we, we pick a hundred dollars as kind of. It's a, it's a, it's a good number, you know, is a hundred dollars a lot?
Yeah, it goes before twenty five dollar rakes. That adds up too, so.
So it's council.
I said twenty five to fifty.
It's what the difference is to fifty.
Who puts a value on these things?
All our mounts replace it. Fifty helps us a lot too. Yeah, I would consider fifty.
Fifty? Uh, Mike, have you online? Do you in favor of fifty dollars?
Yeah, I'm here still.
Does fifty dollars not?
I don't know. I think a hundred is, it's kind of, there's, there's a ton of stuff that's. I don't know. I liked the hundred dollar idea. But if everybody wants to do fifty, I'm open to that too. We just need to raise it up because we're gonna save time with the employees. More than what a, a nice pen is worth.
I'm not concerned about a pen. I'm concerned about the twenty five dollar rakes or other products that cost fifty dollars.
We can definitely do fifty dollars and, and we can see, um. Put that in the policy and that, that will save quite a bit of time. It's, it's definitely improvement. All right.
We motion on it now?
No, not really. Well, what we'll do is we'll update the policy this, over the next couple of weeks, and then we'll have a new policy for you to approve. Usually you can see it right first. Okay. Um, there's another discussion on that. Uh, item number three, council would discuss bay and neuter policy for feral cats. Uh, there was some research done on that. It was talked about at the last council meeting. Diane, Diane has some more information.
Well, I think you just had a point to instruct us, um, how much you want it to be. And again, we'll write it officially and it'll be a policy. Um, I last weekend, I was in front of me, the last time we met, um, they're talking about the minimum cost of the forty, fifty dollars, I think. And that they're only, uh, neutering male cats right now. We're not doing female cats at all. And that's, you know, that's what we're looking at. So you guys have to decide how much money are you going to be able to refund somebody after they have this done. Um, for, you know, this procedure. And also that it's for feral cats, not your house pet that you take in. Unless you guys want to do all. I say all this because a lot of people have been dumping cats and, you know, some people wanna keep them, but they can't afford to get a fix. You know, I can lie and say, yeah, I cut their cat. I don't know. David Clint was telling me, you know, so how can you prove it's not feral? And because of the rate of different birth of that.
Right.
As opposed to. So they want us to lie? It's pretty awkward, you know, that they admit it. They're like holding their cat. There's, here's this feral cat. All I gotta do is pinch his tail. He'll become feral.
So I guess the question is then, um, for council, how much money do we want to set aside in the budget? I'll go figure out. There's, there's money in the budget, you know, if we wanted to pick. Four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars out of the budget. And then, uh, it would be available to folks that came in and asked for it. Um, and then once it's expended, then that's, that's it for the program for the year. Um, let's capital put more money in it.
Right.
So is there, is there a number that council is interested in?
So is five hundred a good number?
Well, we're thinking it was forty dollars, something like that right now.
I don't think we should do a hundred percent. I think they did in the past.
So do fifty percent, so do a fifty percent reimbursement. So if there was, you know. We did four hundred dollars, you know, divided by, divided by twenty, that's, that's a number.
How much did we spend last year?
Nothing last year. Yeah, everything was closed down.
We haven't done this for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Even historically, I've had.
Twenty to twenty five?
I would say you'd have five to ten of the very most scans.
We will twenty five.
Hundred dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Twenty five dollars per animal. And then how much money will we fund the program?
Would four hundred be enough?
Historically, it would be enough.
We have enough to, it goes over a little.
Yeah, historically, you're saying we usually had something around ten, ten animals, give or take.
Yes, I don't know that we had ten.
So that's two hundred fifty, we'd have to do ten.
Okay.
At twenty five dollars, so four hundred would be.
Okay, that sounds good.
Would be even more than that.
Mm-hmm.
And we do not put this in the budget, so we'd have to do a budget amendment or we'd have to look at, usually from a different part of the country. Without having to do any.
We'll find that out. All right, we have the numbers we need.
Okay.
Okay. Get it ready for the next.
It has to be enough to encourage someone to do it.
Right, right.
All right, um, moving on. Item number four, council does to consider closing the east side of Sixth Street in front of the Assembly of God Church. Um, after the May Day parade on five seven, um, for kids' games and et cetera. Traditionally, uh, city council votes to close down some of its city streets during May Day, so there's a place for the events to take place and we'll walk around. Um, takes an official motion by the council to do it. Um, so this is the request.
Okay, I motion that we close down the east side of Sixth Street in front of the Assembly of God after the parade on five seven twenty two for kid games and et cetera.
Much more on Ms. Makatoff to, um, close down Hardistick Street, um, for May Day. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hall for the discussion.
Is, is, uh, the main street also getting closed down? In, in front of the library? Or, yeah, A and Sixth? Is it all the way around there or is it just over at Sixth?
This report only says Sixth Street.
Cause normally, don't they normally close down A Street?
Normally, you have to the parade.
Okay. Should we just add A Street just in case they need it?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be wise. Usually they do re- usually they do request that. Um, that was a good catch one.
Okay.
But, uh, rephrase your motion, include A Street. All right, with respect to Ms. Makatoff, to approve May Day request, um, in addition to A Street between Sixth and Seventh. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, the last item of city business is an executive session, um, for R C W forty two thirty one one zero one B regarding real estate matters. However, I would like to, um, move to public comment first and then circle back to the executive session. Um, after the executive session, um, city council will excuse, so, um, we will not reconvene. But people don't have to hang around with the executive session to be over, so, um, public comment.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Scott Brummer, and I'm running for Lewis County Commissioner here in District Three, which incorporates, uh, all of your city of Vader. Uh, I live in Windlock, so I'm only about ten minutes away from you. I live off the ground west end. Been a resident of Windlock for, well, here in Lewis County for twenty eight years and about the last seventeen, eighteen, here in Windlock. Uh, I have a farm and feed business, uh, called Petri Farm Feed, and been a part of the, uh, was working with the Department of Fish and Wildlife for about twenty years as a biologist. Covering Lewis County here. Uh, so I have been around, uh, spent a lot of time on the ground, uh, working with my neighbors and, and folks here in Lewis County. I am, just wanted to get a chance to, to come by and, and say hi. And if, uh. To be a representative of the people, we need to be out and listening and hearing what's going on in the community and, you know, be a, a part of it. So that's what I'm doing is getting out there to, to listen and do the very best that I can to, uh. Understand the issues that you're facing, not only here in the, in the city, but you have it by. So, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any of me. I wanted to, uh, get the opportunity.
You want to go test again?
I was a file, the area health technologist for Washington State Department of Fish and Water, a little over twenty years. I was terminated from the vaccine. I moved on. I'm a private consultant, so I do like development consulting. Uh, I've actually done that for a number of years since nineteen ninety eight, but, uh, didn't do work, uh, inside Lewis County because of conflict with, with my state job, so, uh, now I do.
Anyone, uh, online have a question? Any questions for Mr. Brummer?
Republican, you've been having a hard nerve, oh.
Well, you know what? This is a Republican county. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's predominantly about sixty five, seventy percent Republican. But I will, I will tell you that, that I'm true Republican. I'm conservative. I'm a fiscal conservative. Um, a, a social conservative, I, I am as well, a senior pastor of a church out in Ethel. Been doing that for many years. Been involved in ministry here in Lewis County for over twenty five years. And so I am, am both socially and physically conservative. So those are the values that I bring to the table and, and stand for.
Yeah, we need more of that.
I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's funny. I, 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 I took the object because I wanted to go fishing game in Alaska, Alaska, but couldn't catch them by our own eyes.
Well, they are tough. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie when it comes to that. Right. I will be out to the, our, our campaign will be out at the parade. So we'll definitely be out there and get a chance to meet more. Folks in the, in the pre-time and looking forward to that. I am, and I am ashamed to say that I have not been to, in all these years of living ten minutes down the road, I have not been to a May Day party. I think, I think we actually have. Thank you. So, so appreciate your time.
Is there any other elected official comments before we adjourn to?
I was gonna ask the chef.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Elected official, a comment.
Doctor's getting away.
You know what? As Mike knows, we have an issue with an individual down on F Street. We need to come up with some formulation applying the stoppage valve from racing up and down. He has two vehicles. One's a black car with a red bumper, a Toyota or something. And he has a gray Toyota pickup truck. And he's just, he blast, he has loud music and he wait. He purposely goes down in front of my house just to aggravate. Then he comes. And he, he, he goes down a gravel and slows down, but when he hits a pavement, he forces it. And I've seen him, I've been trying to keep track of the time that he goes up and down. Uh, it's usually at two thirty in the afternoon. Uh, uh, he, he works. I think he works sometimes. Maybe Trump job, I'm not sure. You know any more about him, Mike?
No, I just know that he drives a Honda Civic and I've reported it. I've reported it twice.
Yeah.
He's living on Street down there on, uh.
He, yeah, I don't think he's in the county. He's in a corner down there in the inn. Right, Mike? Were you there?
Yeah, you guys have been dealing with him for a while.
Okay, I, I mean, I personally haven't. I'm sure some have. That's why I just not jumping out.
Yeah, he's, he's, uh, basically.
An animal or a kid.
Okay.
He, he, and he's, uh, I, I talked to the guy once and he said, well. I hate to take one, say you're paid, or I, I'm just gonna do what I want. He, 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 the guy. And he, uh, he hasn't stopped since I lived in town. It's been twenty seventeen. He's been carrying on like this, different vehicles.
And he says it is on F, not on E?
He, he's on the end of F. Yeah, but he goes down E to get.
He's actually not on.
To the dead end.
He's on. He's on Park. Uh, Park and F Street out in the middle of the street most of the time, uh, in front of the barricade.
The guy with the Toyota as well?
Yeah, yep.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
The name wasn't.
In the black Honda with the red, red bumper?
Okay.
That's a recent vehicle. So I, I can't believe this guy can be. Insured and licensed properly and with equipment correct. There must be a way to correct this situation somehow.
When we catch him moving and there is a violation or a traffic violation, you know, we can take enforcement after this. When he's not moving, obviously we don't have.
I don't know what, what we can do to encourage you guys to somehow catch this guy. And stop him from his bad behavior before someone gets hurt.
Right.
I'm, I'm guilty of not calling nine one one. Mike, Mike, Mike has got asked me for it to, I'm the one calling. So that's why I wanted to take it up with you today.
We also got a notification in the office this week. Someone had been slacking gas.
Okay.
Around ninth and, what, E, I think?
Okay.
In that area.
In that area? Did that happen to anybody? Has that happened at all, any, you know, particular time?
Well, the gentleman that came in actually has video of it.
Okay.
But he wanted to remain anonymous and didn't want to share his video with one of the viewer.
Is he, is the, did you have a vehicle on the video?
I don't know.
Okay, so we don't have a, even a verbalized description of anything, but it has been going on. We know if it's just like one. Or has it been like one night thing or? Okay, so we don't have a, even a verbalized description of anything, but it has been going on, we don't know if it just, like, one, or has it been, like, one night thing, or has it been?
For Mike's, it's happened multiple times, and it's recently happened to him.
Okay.
It's happened to me before, but I put locking cap for my car.
That's all we have on that. And the other matter that we talked about, we don't have any more information about the RV, when the A T V wrote.
Yeah, I was, I was looking for signs, cause I, A T V normally leaves something behind, and I, in that area that we, where the email showed me, I found a couple of, appeared to be dirt bike marks across some yards, but it's like, was that what we, I mean, I don't know how new or old they are, and if that's what made the sound, or?
Right, right.
So.
Okay, well, we're, you and our big deal is clear.
Exactly. Thank you.
Oh.
All right, thank you.
Did you get one?
I from my, I can't protect myself, my person, so, thank you. At the plane already. All right, I'm gonna be, um, adjourn this meeting to the executive session at six fifty-six Indiana, um, the meeting will be adjourned after that, so we will not be reconvening. Thank you.